Okay, good evening, everyone. Today is Tuesday, May 20th, 2025. This is the full meeting, a regular meeting of the Hoyoke City Council. And it is 7:04 PM. The clerk will call the roll.
Anderson Burgos?
Here.
Bartley?
Here.
Devine?
Here.
Givner?
Here.
Greeney?
Here.
Jordane?
Here.
McGrath Smith?
Here.
Murphy and Bledi?
Here.
Ocasio?
Here.
Israel Rivera?
Here.
Jenny Rivera?
Here.
Sullivan?
Here.
Bacon?
Here.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
God bless America.
And the city of Hoyoke.
And the city council.
Awesome. This meeting is being recorded. It's also live streamed on the city's website. And thank you to our friends at Hoyoke Media for all their help. And this is also being translated in Spanish. So now that we've got some of the housekeeping out of the way, public hearing, we don't have any tonight. And I don't see anyone signed up for public comment. I'm going to double check. Oh, Sean, yes, that makes sense. Thank you.
Madam President?
Yes, sir. Counselor Sullivan?
Take item number 54, late file 54.
Second.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to suspend the rules and take item 54 out of order. Late filed by myself. I know, guys. You know what? Jeffrey, the rock star that he is, reminded me that one of our fellow colleagues is zooming in. So I would entertain a motion to take a roll call vote that, for the purposes of this meeting, would be applicable to all motions to receive, to refer items to committee, remove items from the table, place items on the table, package items together, comply with items, or suspend the rules unless there is an objection.
So moved?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Also, Counselor Devine?
I know.
Your name was pulled tonight. You are the lucky winner. You'll be voting first this evening.
Once again.
Yes. So, item 54, we're going to take out of order. Let me just read it into the record, please. We're joined by Sean Sheedy this evening with the Hoyoke Public Schools. So I'm just going to, if it's okay with everyone, I'm going to do an abridged version of 54. This is a proximation of sorts of the city council to, for the consideration of a dollar in hand paid by the grantee to the grantor. This is Grants Verizon, New England, formerly known as New England Telephone and Telegraph Company, with quick claim covenants, the perpetual right, and easement for, I'm looking for, the preliminary site plan, Hoyoke Junior High School, dated October 18th, 1967, last revised April 28th, 1970. Said property is also shown on a drawing, which is attached and marked Attachment A. The above granted rights being more particularly described. We, the grantee, will, the grantee will have the right to connect such conduance, manholes, cables, and wires with poles, conduits, cables, and wires, which are located or may be placed in parcels of land. Permission is granted to enter said private way. It is agreed that the exact location of the facility shall be established by the installation and placement of said facilities within said easement area. In short, this is granting and easement. And I would love the opportunity for Sean to address the council. Normally, we, for public comment, we have a two-minute time limit. But I would entertain a motion that we allow a little more than that, just for the purpose of informational presentation. So with that, Sean, if you can just state your name and address into the record and give us a little background on what's before us this evening.
Okay, yep. Thank you, Madam President. Yep, so my name is Sean Sheedy. I live at 27 Washington Avenue. And I work for the Hoyoke Public Schools as Director of Maintenance and Facilities. So what you guys have in front of you is just that. It's an easement to allow Verizon to run phone lines, copper phone lines, to the new Peck School. They're basically to be the sole proprietor of it, just as they are with all municipality buildings, school buildings. They're the only ones that can run the phone lines, own the phone lines, and do the work on the phone lines. So the easement there is obviously a modification or just an update of what we used to have from Peck School to the new Peck School. And it's just allowing them to be able to grant access, to be able to run the phone lines and work on them and have their equipment in our building. There's no monetary value in it. It's just basically permission. We've already worked on getting them a purchase order, issuing them a check. The engineering has been very difficult up to this point. I've run into many hurdles with them. This has taken almost two, two to three months just to get to this point. And every time I think I'm going to get them there to install the phone lines, I get knocked down a peg. And then they tell me, oh, you have to do this now, or you have to do this or that. Even what you're seeing in front of you was, I just happened to get ahold of an engineer and he said, oh, I mailed that to the, I mailed that to the mayor. You just need a council vote and have the mayor sign it, give it back, and we'll eventually get over there and install your phone line. So because we are up against it, you guys know we're opening the school in less than three months. This is a mission-critical piece of that. The elevator inspection relies on this. The burglar alarm relies on this. Many other fax machines rely on this. And as the owners, we cannot allow them to hold us back and not get our certificate of inspection and allow the school to open for the kids. So that's why it became a late file. I didn't want to have to do it, but unfortunately, this was the only way I could do it. And if we can get a vote tonight, I can get the mayor to sign it, and then Bennett can certify it for me tomorrow. They'll accept it electronically, and then they'll schedule the workers to come out within a week or so to start the work and be able to meet our deadlines.
Thank you, Sean. I have Counselor Rivera's hand up, and then Counselor Bacon.
Thank you. I think, so, thank you for that, Sean, and thank you for all the work you've been doing there. I totally can see how much of a struggle it is to deal with Verizon just in general. And my question, you kind of answered it in the process. I was going to ask you if there's any way where we could kind of like incorporate and find out when they can like update or maintain the exact poles that they're installing. So like, do they do a 10-year review, come back, or a 15-year or 20-year? Because we're having issues throughout the city with Verizon poles just in general. So like, since you're in that process now, if there's a way to like incorporate that, but I see that you're jumping through hoops and dealing with nonsense. So it probably looks like that we're just going to have to deal with it anyways and try to find another way later on to get them to kind of listen to us. So good luck, and you're going to get my vote regardless. I just wanted to like, try to have the conversation where it's like, hey, at least with the Peck one, right? Can you come every 15 years to make sure that you're maintaining and updating the poles, whatever needs to be done? Because it's been difficult for even us to have them do that with poles that are older than 30 years old. But thank you again.
Thank you. And I have Counselor Bacon.
Thank you. I thought I overheard you indicating that legal had reviewed this just to make sure everything's in order and hopefully you don't hit another obstacle.
Yeah, I believe Kathleen is on, if she would want to speak on that.
But if you're, if you, they gave you the all set, I just want to have it on.
She did. She sent an email saying that they had no issues with it. But if we want, we'd like to hear it from her also, if she's on.
It's fine. I'll take your word.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. I have Counselor Jordane and then Counselor Greeney.
Yes, Madam President. To Sean, quick question. We're giving the easement to Verizon, which is no problem. But I just want to be clear, this isn't exclusive to them. That is to say, 10 years from now, we have a different phone vendor if we wanted. We could also give somebody else that service or another easement so that while we're giving this perpetual easement to Verizon, we could theoretically give one to T-Mobile or AT&amp;T 10 years from now if the city wanted to have somebody else. Is that, is that correct?
Yeah, I believe so. Because like we all know, the HG&E is working on getting fiber and getting, eventually maybe getting phone if we go in-house. Yeah, I don't, I don't see why not. And I'd ask Kathleen to chime in on that also with her legal opinion.
Attorney Deignan, is there anything you'd like to add?
No, I think that Sean has said it correctly in answer to Counselor Jordane's question. I don't think that'll be a problem.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Counselor Greeney?
Move to approve.
Second.
All righty, this is a, we're going to, oh, I'm so sorry. Counselor, oh, I didn't realize that.
I realize it.
No, no, no. Withdraw my motion.
Okay.
His hand up.
Sorry, I missed your hand up.
No, no, I'm sorry. I didn't have a hand. Oh, okay, I saw you.
Oh, all right.
Sorry.
No worries.
We're good.
Okay.
So.
Great, on the motion. So we do need a roll call vote for this?
Yes.
I think so.
Yes.
And?
Definitely do.
All righty. The clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you are voting to approve the granting of the easement, item 54.
Devine?
Yes.
Greeney?
Yes.
Jordane?
Yes.
McGrath Smith?
Yes.
Murphy and Bledi?
Yes.
Ocasio?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sean.
Then I'll follow up with you tomorrow.
Okay.
Yeah, okay. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Counselors. Thank you, Madam President.
Yep. Thank you.
Sean? Kevin? See the signature? Front page. Alba Sett. Front page.
On the agenda?
No, no. There's 54.
Oh, I didn't, I didn't see it. All I have is, all I have is the agenda.
Oh, there's, there's full ones up on the.
Oh, okay.
I just wanted to mention who the attorney was.
Oh, who was it?
Alba Sett.
Oh, Alba Sett? Oh, yeah. I wonder how he's doing?
He's doing pretty good.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, that's, oh, he drafted this.
All right, so.
Oh, interesting.
He's a right-of-way manager.
Before.
Good guy, too. Alba Sett, yep.
Okay, before we get started and head into our agenda, and I don't see anyone else on Zoom for public comment, just to, I don't see anyone else here. I do want to take a moment. We, Hoyoke has lost a great person in our community, leader in our community, Evelyn Chesky. I was informed, passed away recently. And I believe, did someone else have someone? Counselor Jordane?
Yeah, I had one. Peter Kenny, as far as I know, I mean, at least 50 or 60-year resident of Hoyoke. I think he's originally from Connecticut, so I can't say lifelong Hoyoker. But Peter taught at Hoyoke High School from 1957 until 1994. So he was a long-time teacher. I know how he knew him because he was also affiliated with the English Department. And he passed away this week. He lived on Locust. He was Ward 6 resident. And Pete, and of course, his significant other, Jeannie Yonkers, was also, was also a long-time teacher at Hoyoke High School. But Peter, just a wonderful, wonderful guy. He was the, our debate and speech coach for years. And if you want to know where Kevin Jordane got his start, that was where it was. Grade, grade 10, Hoyoke High School. And we just won all kinds of awards and state tournaments and national tournaments. And he was our mentor. And Peter was amazing. And so many Hoyoke kids did amazing stuff with Peter's tutelage. So I'm just one of many of his proteges. So he was awesome. And we miss Peter.
Counselor Greeney?
Yeah, Peter was a great teacher. He influenced a lot of people coming through Hoyoke High School. And his significant other, Jeannie, of course, is also related to Abby Chesky. So it's a double.
Oh, that's right.
A double, a double thing for her to have to deal with.
Observe a moment of silence, please. Thank you. All right. So we've got a few things laid on the table, but there are some things that, it looks like we do have the legal form that we were looking for. Counselor Rivera?
Yeah, I'd like to extend a motion to take a 1, 4, 5, and 6 as a package.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to take up items 1, 4, and 6 as a package. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Is it 5 and 6?
5 and 6.
I'm sorry.
Correct, 5 and 6.
Okay. 1, 4, 5, and 6.
5, 6, yep.
As a package. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so let me just read those into the record. One is from the Committee on Ordinance. An order that Hamden Street, streetscape improvements from Waldo Street to Nonituck Street block are made based on recommendations of the city engineer. Recommended that the order be adopted. Item 4 is the Committee on Ordinance. An order that if someone is putting in an RFP through the city for a property that is up for sale and the applicant has outstanding issues with the Board of Health, Building Department, or any other city department having to do with properties they own, they are not eligible for the RFP. And that was recommended that the order be adopted. 5 is the Committee on Ordinance. That the city accept Lynn and Drive and Richard Eager Drive as public ways. This was recommended that Richard Eager be accepted as a public way and Lynn and Drive be accepted as a public way, pending recommendation of the Board of Public Works. And 6 is ordinance that the DPW install a handicap sign for Susanna Morales at 361 Chestnut Street. Recommended that the order be adopted, amending Anna Rodriguez to Susanna Morales at the request of the Disabilities Commission. Counselor Rivera?
Thank you. So these are items I presented on them, I believe, two weeks ago. And these are just following up because we didn't have the necessary paperwork or the language with regards to some of these. So just following up, just to get these off the table. And moving forward to our next ordinance issue, items that we will have for the next follow-up meeting because I have a meeting coming up. But if, if any, there's any committee members that have anything that they want to add, just because it's been a while, feel free to do so. But other than that, they're pretty straightforward.
Thank you, Counselor. Do others have things that they'd like to add to the report? Counselor McGrath Smith?
Thank you, Madam President. I just had one question around item 1, looking at the memo that Victoria Hul had drafted originally and then comparing it to the language that's here. There was one piece that I didn't see named, unless I'm just misunderstanding where it is in the document. And that was around the Schedule 5 bus stops. And we were supposed to remove Hamden Street northerly from Waldo Street 50 feet easterly, and then adopt Hamden Street northerly from Waldo Street 140 feet easterly. And it says, this is to resolve the fact that the current bus stop location does not match the location currently listed in MUNICODE. And I just, I don't, unless I'm missing it, and I might be, I don't see it here. So I'm just wondering if that needs to be added.
That might be a question for the Law Department. Attorney Deignan?
Yes, I drafted these, and I believe I drafted that one because there were two bus stops. And one I got Hamden Street northerly from Waldo Street 50 feet easterly, bus stop. And the other one is Hamden Street northerly, Waldo Street 140 feet easterly, bus stop. So those are the two bus stop ordinances that Victoria requested, and I submitted both of them.
So Jeffrey only received, did you say item 5? Oh, 5. You got 5? He received 5 legal forms for this, this order.
There's 1, 2, 3, 4. He should have received them all. 5, actually, there's more, 6. There were quite a few, 7.
Yeah. We're missing some of them.
8. You know, if there's only 5, you know, I asked that those be hand-delivered. I didn't email them. So I can email them to Jeffrey first thing because they're all done.
So if we could have.
I'm not sure why.
Okay. If we could just amend the motion to just withdraw this one and keep it tabled for now?
Sure.
I'll, I'll say.
Yes.
Go ahead, Linda, sorry.
Counselor Bacon?
Well, I'm on a different thing.
Okay, on that motion, I was going to second that. Motion to table it.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded to table?
1.
Item 1. Lay that on the table. All those in, any other discussion on item 1? Oh, right, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Thank you. Counselor Bacon?
Thank you. My question was on number 5. I don't see any paperwork on it, so I'm just trusting that whatever needed to happen, happened, and then our clerk can list those streets as accepted. I just want to verify, do you need, what paperwork do you need? Because the last I knew, we were waiting for something from the Board of Public Works, but I think they requested legal to advise them because the people on the board hadn't done an acceptance of a street. We hadn't done one, I guess, in quite a while.
Yeah.
So I guess there were some procedural questions. Maybe our chair knows. Chair Rivera may.
Counselor?
I haven't, I haven't, I haven't received any information either regarding this. I'm going to be honest with you. I, I was told today that most of the stuff, well, all the items had the necessary paperwork attached to it. I have not gotten any communication. But you're not wrong, Counselor Bacon, either. So if you want to table that one until we get more information, too, I'm with it, too. I'm not against it.
Well, yeah, I'm not trying to be difficult. I just want to make sure it's done.
Let's, how about we table?
I think there is a list, if I may, Madam President. If I may to the President.
Yeah.
Question, I think there is an ordinance change because I think there's an ordinance that says, what are the publicly accepted streets? So I think, I could be wrong, but I could have recalled that we did have some form of legal form when we're accepting a street. Assuming that they approve, you know, the DPW approves it, but.
Yeah, why don't?
Is a listing. I think that should be looked into.
Yeah, we can lay that. I'm okay with that.
Yeah, because this was really a paperwork issue from back in the day.
So I would entertain a motion to lay item 5.
Make a motion to.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Counselor Bartley?
Just regarding 4, just through the chair to Deignan, I, I see the word director. Let me just make sure I'm looking at it right. There could be help, I'll look the right one. I don't know who the director is. All bidders must provide a certificate of satisfactory, a certificate of satisfactory to director. So director's not defined. And then, more to the point, I could have sworn we said this more than once. It's all bidders must provide a certificate satisfactory that they're in compliance with all building, health, and fire codes. And I didn't want to, if you'll notice in the way the order's written, it kind of leaves a catch-off phrase or any other city department having to do with properties they own. So in compliance with all city, all city departments relative to any fees, fines, taxes. That was the language, that's an artful way I said it, but that was the language that we were shooting for a couple of meetings ago. So I'm going to say it'd be my strong preference, A, to get the word director defined somewhere and get that language inserted in here. So I would like us to table this one until it's in better form, please.
All right. So there's a motion to?
Well, I don't want to make the motion.
Oh.
He says.
Okay, okay. Counselor Devine?
I'm just, oh, I'm sorry.
No, 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 no. Go ahead. I thought he was talking to me.
I'm looking for the word director.
It's on the second.
Under 2, 3.
Paragraph.
This is for item number 4?
Yeah. Section 2-349, certificate of compliance.
All bidders must.
Oh, I know what you're looking at. I was looking at, I got it, I got it.
Okay. So, anyone else?
So I'll make, I'll make a motion to move to table.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to table item 4. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
How about item 6?
Item 6 seems promising.
We should be able to.
Let's see, though.
Oh, no. Don't speak too fast.
Motion to pass the first reading.
There you go. Motion to pass the first, I was waiting.
Second.
Motion. Motion to pass the first reading, second. Any other discussion on item 6?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Second.
Second.
Motion, well, I have to say, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Counselor Rivera, you said?
Now, the motion that the passage be ordained.
Oh, no, we haven't.
Wait, we have to do the second reading.
Oh, I thought I already did. It's my bad.
No, back up.
Our motion to pass the second reading. My fault.
Motion to pass the second reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And?
Motion that the passage be ordained.
Second.
Motion that the passage be ordained. The clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you are voting to adopt item 6.
Devine?
Yes.
Givner? Oh. Greeney?
Yes.
Jordane?
Yes.
McGrath Smith?
Yes.
Murphy and Bledi?
Yes.
Ocasio?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos? Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
All right. And?
I think two and three should stay on the table.
Yes, agreed. That sounds great. Right, so that brings us to item seven. Counselor Rivera, would you like to take anything as a package perhaps?
Motion to take as a package, items seven through thirteen.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to, uh, take up items seven through thirteen as a package first off the table?
So moved to, removed from the table?
Removed from the table. Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, and then we can take them up as a package. There's a motion to take them up as a package. Um, seven through thirteen, I will read them briefly. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Um, all of these orders have been complied with and they are from the Committee on Public Safety. Seven is, um, an order that the HR Director and Police Chief come to counsel to discuss, um, the police academy. Um, eight is, uh, that the Police Chief, Board of Health, Mayor, and Law Department meet with counsel about quality of life issues. Um, nine is, uh, that the Police Department enforce the stop sign at Brown and Laurel Streets. Ten is, uh, that the police advise on the status of formation of a traffic bureau and, and code enforcement. Eleven is, uh, that speed trailers be removed regularly, or moved regularly to collect speed data throughout the city. Twelve is, uh, that the police, uh, create a publicly visible calendar of speed trailers so communities know when they can find them. Thirteen is, um, that the Police Chief provide, uh, an update on traffic concerns in Hoyoke, um, especially in wards one, two, three, four, and six, um, as required by the city's ordinance. And all of these were recommended, that the order has been complied with. Counselor Jenny Rivera?
Thank you, Madam President. So, um, at this meeting, we did have lengthy conversations, so I will keep this report as short as possible. Um, item seven, we had the HR Director Kelly Curran and Chief Keenan confirm that Hoyoke has changed the policy and now swears in the officers only after the academy graduation. Um, this policy protects the city from financial exposure and aligns with practices in sixteen other nearby communities, including Springfield, West Springfield, Pittsfield, and Agawam. Previously, early swear-ins was tied to issuing training loans, which the city is now addressing differently. Um, Chief Keenan noted that the rest of injury and financial liability under the old policy supports the new approach as a legal practical improvement. The chief also updated the council on the new thirteen-week field training program based on San Jose motto, now implemented post-academy to better prepare new officers and address concerns cited in the January twenty twenty-third audit. The department is also requiring recruits to sign contracts agreeing to reimburse the city for academy costs if they leave within five years. Um, item eight was very lengthy, so I'll keep it short. Um, we, well, this was brought up by Counselor Kevin Jordan. Um, one of the things brought up was trash and overflow dumpsters. The chief agreed with us and cited a recent cleanup with support from the Sheriff's Department and DPW. He also emphasized intent to crack down on trash violators using community policing grants, um, noise and complaints and decimals meters. And the chief committed to purchasing new and modern decimal meters. He's also suggesting, um, through the ordinance ending earlier hours from nine P, to nine PM, from ten to eleven PM. Request, and he also requested that the council support for budget transfers to fund this equipment. Um, also addressed with landlord accountability. Endorsed the idea and encouraged ordinance action for the council, highlighted the injustice of absentee landlords creating issues in Hoyoke while living comfortably elsewhere. Drug and activity and public safety. Um, chief mentioned the department is part of a regional ATV unit to address illegal vehicle using the streets and parks. Um, positive feedback on recent enforcement efforts, efforts targeting open-air drug dealing and increased park patrols. And the last thing was community policing improvements. Officers now are assigned to fixed beats rather than rotating, and bike patrols and walking patrols will resume when weather gets better and available grant money. Um, item nine, the original order was for the Hoyoke, um, Police Department to enforce the stop sign at the Brown Avenue and Laurel Street intersection. Um, Counselor Rivera noted that the item had a lengthy past discussion, including residents' testimony and reference to, uh, possible ordinance, and also, um, Counselor Bartley was involved with this. Um, and marketing, that's okay. So that was number nine. Um, item ten, Chief Keenan provided a brief update. Work on ticketing system update appears to be completed. Mentioned collaboration with Captain Monfort, Monfort, whatever his name is. The new sys, sorry, the new system is believed to be online and functioning. Item eleven, um, Counselor Gibner acts if this type of frequent rotation, um, frequent rotation is feasible and beneficial for broader citywide data collection. Mentioned ongoing partnership with the Mass DOT and distracted driving campaign. Additional data from the effort may complement this initiative. Um, the chief confirmed the speeding trailer rotation is already happening. Sergeant Bartolo, and I can't say his name either, is currently managing it and moves the trailer to different locations. Chief will double-check its current placement and ensure continued implementation. May warrant, um, regular reporting follow-ups to public safety per order, original order. Um, item twelve, Counselor Gibner acknowledged the intent of the order has likely been fulfilled as this was discussed in item eleven. Um, item thirteen, um, was a little lengthy as well. Counselor Gibner, traffic squad is legally mandated by ordinance, acknowledged staff constraints, but requested an update on future plans. Um, chief confirmed the awareness and intend to comply with the ordinance. Major staffing shortage cited as the primary obstacle for officers lost just that week when we did have the meeting, including two other departments facing seven to eight retirements in January. Already ten officers down. Traffic enforcement increased significantly over the past two months. One officer wrote forty citations in one shift. Department is leveraging grants and camp, and campaign, com- campaigns, um, to assist with enforcement. Traffic squad is priority, but resources are stretched across patrol, narcotics, detective work, and upcoming school assignments. Staffing models outdated, calls for union contract reforms, and better officer compensation to retain and attract talent. Um, reinforce the traffic enforcement is wrapping up. Data collection and sanitation are improving. And they also emphasize the need to remain competitive with nearby departments, or Hoyoke will continue to be a last choice. Um, and counselors there express the appreciation for the chief's efforts and transparency. So that is it.
Thank you, Counselor Rivera, um, for all of the updates, and I see Counselor Israel Rivera's hand is up.
Yeah, it's not a question. Jenny, you did, uh, Counselor Rivera did a great job presenting. Thank you for hosting. I wasn't able to attend the meeting and I filed a couple of those orders. If anything, I'll refile, I'll link, I'll refile the ones around the traffic squad because although, um, it may not seem like it's priority, uh, I, I feel like the traffic squad is priority because it is ordinance, it's law. Um, and there are a lot of issues that are happening within the community that if there was more traffic, uh, cars present, uh, especially in parking lots specifically, um, um, it would prevent a tremendous amount of situations that are happening downtown. So, uh, just wanted to put that out there as a statement. Um, and for me, it's just making sure that public safety is priority and traffic is public safety. Um, it's one of the premier places where public safety starts. Um, but just wanted to put that out there as a statement, and I appreciate, uh, your time, Jenny.
Thank you. Counselor Jordan?
Yeah, Madam President, just wanted to compliment the Chair for an excellent meeting. Uh, I, I really enjoyed that and it was very productive, and thank the chief for coming in. I, I did want to just mention on item seven, this is a classic example of where the city council did its research, came up with a good suggestion to the chief, uh, relative to about the swearing-in of officers after they actually complete the academy and they're ready to join the force as opposed to before and taking on that liability for many people who just don't make it through. And so, uh, they listened to our suggestion, they took our suggestion, and they made the policy change. And I just wanted to, again, compliment Brian, our new police chief, because quite frankly, that should have happened years ago. And because of his leadership, he's open to these type of new ideas and better ways of doing things. And he's, and he's acting on those things. So, uh, appreciate the good meeting, appreciate, uh, the new perspective at HPD on, on, on making these type of improvements. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, on the motion that these orders, uh, are complied with, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, thank you. And then we've got fourteen, are we keeping fourteen and fifteen? Well, fifteen, yes.
Item fourteen's ready to go, and it also has, I, I wasn't sure if this was gonna, we tabled it, but I said just put it onto the next agenda, so it's also hand in hand with item fifty-one. So, uh, if we want to just take those as a package, they're, they're the same thing.
Motion to suspend the rules and take items fourteen and fifty-one?
Yep, as a package.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
And then I'd like to make a motion that we adopt it as amended, and I'd just like to go through the very simple amendment here. Um.
Motion's been made and seconded to, um, adopt the, uh, attached recall provision special act for four-year elected officials in the city of Hoyoke, amended as request, as requested by the mayor.
Correct. And you'll notice, uh, counselors, it's in your packets as item fifty-one, the full language.
Yes.
Just so you're looking for the final wording.
All right, um, Counselor Jordan?
Yes, on the motion to adopt, um, I just want to point out in the change on fifty-one, you'll notice in this paragraph, section one, A, um, there's in bold, there's the words in each ward. So I want to give you the feedback that I got from the mayor because obviously it isn't, this passed unanimously from the council, but we also need the mayor's support in order for it to go to the legislature, and then ultimately, if they approve it, for the public to vote and approve. He requested, he was supportive, by the way, which is a big improvement from past, one particular past mayor. Uh, and he wanted, however, it to be not just ten percent of all the voters, but ten percent of the voters in each ward. So I thought that was a fair compromise. So, um, I s- I put in his amendment that he requested, which is to make it in each ward. And, uh, Mike Bissonette did review this and he was comfortable with, uh, with the word change, so it now is, it comes back to you because we have to now approve this as the new item fifty-one as opposed to amending the old one. We're approving this one as new, new item fifty-one with these new three words as requested by the mayor. So, uh, happy to answer any questions, but this is, that's the only change.
Counselor Devine, and then Counselor McGrath Smith? Uh, just your microphone, Counselor Devine?
Under, um, A?
Yep.
Um, how many, two hundred and fifty votes is all that is necessary?
No.
To get it started. Okay, could you explain?
Yeah, sure. Yeah, it's a good, it's a good question. To just take out the petition, you need to have two hundred and fifty people onboard to even just take it out.
Okay.
But to actually bring it back and get it on the ballot, you have to have ten percent of all the registered voters.
In, in all the different wards?
And now, and now it has to be ten percent of Ward one, Ward two, Ward three. So you can't have like fifty percent of Ward seven and nobody in Ward one theoretically. You have to have ten pers- Yeah, exactly. You have to have ten percent every ward.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor McGrath Smith?
Thank you, Madam President. Um, and, and through, uh, the President to make other order, um, if I may, are you, uh, comfortable with us approving this tonight? I think this is, um, I fully understand that we need the mayor's approval in order to move this forward. I'm internal warm to the order. Um, it makes sense for us to approve it tonight. Are you also okay with us tabling it along with all the other things that we have to move together as a package for the home rule petition?
Yeah, I think we should just approve it. I don't think we need to table it. However, to your point, it is, the mayor has made it clear he's not, he's going to wait until we do the full modernization package before he signs it and sends it to Boston. Um, so hopefully this will all get figured out in the next, uh, I know we're shooting for by July first. Hopefully that all comes to pass. Um, but yeah, he, he has, that's a, that's a good point. He, he has said that he wants to send it all together, uh, next month.
Right, but it doesn't, doesn't sound like there's any action required on our part.
No, because it doesn't go until he signs it, so he can, it kind of sits on his desk.
Correct.
All it goes.
More than fine. Thank you.
You good? Counselor Graney?
Yeah, just quickly through the chair to the other, to, uh, Counselor Jordan. Does the original two hundred and fifty, uh, petition have to be ten percent from each ward?
No. No, only the fi, after they get the petition, then you would need the ten percent from each ward.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none. Um, on the motion to adopt the amended language, um, in item fifty-
One.
Fifty-one.
And what's the other one, Kevin?
Oh, yes, roll call vote will be needed for this.
Thank you, yes. Um, the clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you are voting in favor of, um, adopting the amended language for the petition.
Devine?
Yes.
Graney?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
McGrath Smith?
Yes.
Murphy and Bledi?
Yes.
Ocasio?
Yes.
Rivera? Israel?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
All right, thank you, everyone. With that, you have passed the. And then we'll leave fifteen on the table, obviously. City budget, um, for our, the section on regular and pending executive session minutes. Item sixteen is the meeting minutes from May sixth, um, from our city clerk and administrative assistant. Is there a motion?
Motion to receive.
Motion to receive?
And table items sixteen, fifteen? Is that what we're on?
Oh, um, I just.
Fifteen stays on the table.
Okay, that's fine.
Um, so sixteen would be to.
Oh, we're on sixteen, I apologize.
That's all right. Um, to approve, receive and approve the, uh, minutes from May sixth. Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you once again for the minutes. They're always great. Um, I think seventeen, eighteen. I'll just leave. I think we leave those. Okay.
Motion to table seventeen, eighteen?
Second.
Uh, motions were made and seconded to leave seventeen and eighteen on the table. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Communications. We have nineteen is from our city auditor, uh, the, uh, general fund and sewer enterprise budget to actual reports, um, May fifteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Yep, receive with a copy to finance?
Receive with a copy to finance. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Twenty is from the Budget Advisory Group, um, the recommendations memo.
Receive with a copy to all the counselors and a copy to the mayor, which I think he's gotten a copy at this point.
Receive, uh, with a copy to the mayor and council. Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Just, if I may, just.
Absolutely. Counselor Jordan?
This was the committee that was formed at the request of the superintendent, and, uh, the President appointed me to be on this committee. It was about the school, uh, budget and some recommendations to help kind of do things more efficiently, save some money, some different things. It was very interesting. Uh, we met for approximately three months under the leadership of Sean Mangano, so there was council representation, school committee representation. There were principals, there was, uh, union officials, uh, finance office, there was a number of people. So I would, uh, take, take a moment to read the recommendations. They're not too, too long, um, but hopefully some of that stuff will go a long way to helping us save a few dollars.
Thank you, Counselor, and thank you for, uh, saying yes when I asked.
Yeah, my pleasure.
Thought that might be right up your alley, so thank you. Um, all right, item twenty-one is from Wildweeds Corporation.
Suspend rules and take up twenty-one and twenty-two as a package.
Motion's been made and seconded to suspend the rules, taking twenty-one and twenty-two as a package. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, twenty-one is a community outreach meeting at One Cabot Street on May twenty-sixth for Wildweeds Corporation and Bull Rush LLC. Um, and then two is from Exceptional Grow LLC, also a community outreach meeting at One Cabot Street, June second, twenty twenty-five.
Motion to receive and send to ordinance?
Motion to receive and send to ordinance. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Uh, twenty-three is a petition, uh, Blue Fox Brands Incorporated Special Permit Application Amendment for marijuana manufacturing establishment at One Cabot Street.
Receive and send to ordinance?
Receive and send to ordinance. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All righty, President's report. Pull it up here. Um, so, just a reminder and an invitation to the public. Um, the Memorial Day ceremony will take place at the War Memorial Building, um, which is three-ten Appleton Street next Monday, the twenty-sixth, um, ten AM. Counselors, if you are attending, um, make sure you're there by nine forty-five, please. We're going to line up. And the keynote speaker this year is our good friend, Peter Tallman, former city counselor. Um, so that is awesome. Um, and afterwards, the American Legion Post three fifty-one, um, my neighbors on St. Colby Drive will be hosting a breakfast, um, from, uh, eight to ten, and then a lunch at noon. So you are, um, oh, and Post three twenty-five is hosting a lunch at noon. That's the one on Sycamore Street. Everyone's invited. Um, and, uh, we were also, everyone is invited, uh, the Veteran Service Department is hosting a grave restoration event on Saturday, June seventh, ten AM, Elmwood Cemetery, which is on North Hampton Street. Um, there's a rain date of June fourteenth. This event is, uh, to restore and preserve, um, our. This event is uh, to restore and preserve um, our deceased veterans' markers, so they're kept in a presentable form. Um, and you're all invited to that in the public if you, if you want to help. Um, the pride flag raising will take place in front of City Hall on Monday, June second, which is so soon, that's crazy, um, at five PM. Um, so you're all invited to that. This will kick off several Pride Month events happening throughout the month of June. Um, we had our first budget hearing last night. It was a great conversation. Um, a lot of the things that um, Counselor Jordan mentioned were discussed with the school budget especially. So I encourage everyone, if you didn't get to watch um, or be there, and including the public, encourage you all at home to tune in. If you're tuning into this, why not tune into a budget hearing? Um, and our next one is next Wednesday, um, the twenty-eighth, six o'clock. And then Monday, June ninth, um, also at six PM. God willing, uh, we will vote on the budget when we meet on June seventeenth. Um, and so uh, stay tuned for that. Um, and last, I am a new aunt and I wanted to give a shout out because um, I have another niece, actually my first niece, and not everyone will agree that there should be another strong rumbaletti female in this world, but there is now. So um, congratulations to my brother and his wife.
Congratulations.
Um, Josephine, we're all gonna call her JoJo, whether or not she wants it, I'm gonna call her JoJo. So I just wanted to give a shout out to a really awesome family. Um, and that's my updates. Does anyone have anything else they'd like to add? Counselor Anderson Burgos.
Thank you, Madam President. So um, I will be running uh, this, the second annual Pride uh, Rainbow Run, which is in uh, Ashley Reservoir. So anyone who's watching, who's a runner, if you're from Holyoke or even outside of Holyoke, please sign up to run. This is a very fun event. It all started here in Holyoke and uh, we're gonna have.
What's the date?
Uh, June fourteenth, sorry, June fourteenth.
And can walkers sign up too?
Yeah, walkers as well.
Great. Some of us are not runners.
I mean, initially I wasn't a runner either, so.
Counselor Devine?
I just wanted to mention, uh, since Juan hasn't mentioned, you did win a couple of um, races.
Last year, I did.
Yeah, I think he was a fifty-year-old.
I was, yeah, fifty, thank you for calling that up. So I, 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 yes, in my, in my age group, I was uh, first place. And then I placed third in men and then fifth altogether from all the runners.
That's great. We love that for you.
Yeah.
No, I don't know how I did it, but I did it.
Awesome.
I wanna see you and Jeff go head on head dog.
My money's on Jeff.
I got my money on Jeff.
Yeah.
Me too.
Yeah. Alright, I was the slowest kid on the track team in high school, so there's that. Reports of committees. Committee on Finance, to whom was referred an order uh, that there be uh, a transfer uh, in the amount of twenty-seven thousand dollars from firefighters to overtime, arson overtime, hazmat overtime. Recommended that the order be adopted.
Receive and adopt the committee report and pass the second reading.
Motion's been made to receive and adopt the committee report and pass the second reading under discussion, Counselor Devine?
Yeah, the fire chief was in. These are mostly for fire department. And um, this is, he talked to us about the hazmat. Uh, whenever they use hazmat overtime, the state actually reimburses them, so that's kind of a good thing. And they still have about ninety-eight thousand in the remaining overtime account. And um, it'll, there's three and a half more pay periods. Uh, the arson um, line item only has two hundred dollars in there, so he's gonna move some money in there. And now that, the hazmat is combined with the Burke, with Berkshire County and Holyoke. So that's why there's a little more money that needs to be transferred, but we will get reimbursed by the state.
Thank you, Counselor Devine, and I believe this was also somewhat discussed last night when uh, the fire chief was presenting the, the budget for, for next year.
Yeah.
Um, so is there any other comments, questions, concerns? Everything? Everything okay? Alright, um, so uh, the motion was to pass the second reading. The clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you are voting to approve the transfer? Devine?
Yes.
Grady?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
McGrath Smith?
Yes.
Murphy and Bledi?
Yes.
Ocasio?
Yes.
Israel Rivera? Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Eleven yeas unanimous vote. Alright. That we passed. Twenty-five. Uh, Committee on Finance, to whom was referred an order that there be a transfer request of ten thousand nine hundred forty-six dollars and thirty-four cents um, from fire captain, deputy fire chief, fire lieutenant, assistant super fire alarms. Um, recommended that the order be adopted.
Be received, adopt the committee report and pass the second reading.
Motion is to receive, adopt the committee report and pass the second reading. Counselor Devine?
Okay, and again, the, the chief is always um, good when he comes in and gives us a lot of information. Um, apparently they moved too much um, for retirement, so they need to put that back into the line item, in the lieutenant's line item, and balancing out for the rest of the year. Um, apparently there's a captain demoted to lieutenant. Um, and the civil service has notified the fire department that they need to comply by a certain date to do some promotions.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, um, so on the motion, um, the clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting to uh, uh, approve the transfer request. Devine?
Yes.
Grady?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
McGrath Smith?
Yes.
Murphy and Bledi?
Yes.
Ocasio?
Yes.
Israel Rivera? Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Eleven yeas unanimous vote. Thank you. Okay, twenty-six. Committee on Finance, to whom was referred an order that uh, transfer requests uh, be approved, uh, forty-five thousand dollars um, from firefighter to R and M vehicles, motor vehicle. Uh, recommended that the order be adopted. Counselor Devine?
Motion to receive and adopt the committee report and pass the second reading.
Motion has been made and seconded to receive and adopt the committee report and pass the second reading under discussion.
As the chief said, that um, the parts are getting to be very expensive. One was um, an EGR valve was a thousand dollars. So, you know, this is uh, gonna be a problem in the future. And um, they have to use factory parts, which are even more expensive. The fuel will probably be going to, um, they're probably gonna spend as about the mu- the same as they did last year. So that was, that was that.
Okay, anyone else? Alright, um, on the motion, the clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you are voting to approve the transfer for forty-five thousand. Devine?
Yes.
Grady?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
McGrath Smith?
Yes.
Murphy and Bledi?
Yes.
Ocasio?
Yes.
Israel Rivera? Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Eleven yeas unanimous vote. Thank you. With that, you've passed uh, twenty-six. Item twenty-seven is the Committee on Finance, uh, referred an order that the city council accept the provisions of the fiscal year twenty twenty-five firefighter safety equipment grant program, uh, round two, eleven thousand six hundred sixty dollars, no match.
Motion to receive and adopt the committee report and pass the second reading.
A motion has been made to receive the committee report and pass the second reading. Uh, Counselor Devine?
Yeah, this is for uh, firefighter safety equipment grant, and it's round two, and it's funded through five years. So this is giving the opportunity to um, have more, more things such as self-contained breathing apparatus, mask, helmets, personnel, um, boots and gloves, protection equipment. And Counselor Jordan may have helped me with this. Um, there are three electric power plugs for electrical vehicles.
Mm-hmm.
What happens is, and Counselor Jordan, certainly cor- correct me, they're, they're able to plug these electric um, plugs in so that it doesn't drain the battery if the, the, the car is sitting there at a fire, pretty much.
Pretty, pretty much. Also, the, the point of those is so that they don't have to either turn the car on in order to uh, safely either extract someone or to um, put the car out if it's on fire. It's to be able to deal with electric vehicles in these fire situations. And with the prevalence now of more electric cars, they need to have the new tools to be able to put, put them out if there's, you know, God forbid a fire. Someone is stuck in one of these in a dangerous situation.
It's a pretty cool um, thing for sure. Thank you.
And for what it's worth, I watched that meeting and I thought you did a great job.
Yes.
High, uh, summarizing it, breaking it down.
Got a good committee there.
You, indeed you do. Um, alright, so on the motion, the clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you are voting to approve the grant. Devine?
Yes.
Grady?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
McGrath Smith?
Yes.
Murphy and Bledi?
Yes.
Ocasio?
Yes.
Israel Rivera? Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Eleven yeas unanimous vote. Thank you. Pass that, okay. We have twenty-eight. Item twenty-eight, uh, the Committee on Finance, to whom was referred an order that there be a transfer of thirty-five thousand dollars uh, from school capital outlay to council on aging R and M building. Recommended that the order be adopted.
Motion to receive and adopt the committee report and pass the second reading.
Motion's been made and seconded to adopt the committee report and pass the second reading. Uh, Counselor Devine?
We had this come up before, and the reason we tabled it was because of, it was coming from the school department. He wanted to make sure um, that that was okay. And apparently there was a hundred and fifty thousand dollars that the mayor was able to use that um, to take care of this. So um, they're gonna be painting the exterior of the senior center. And if you went and took a look up there, it's pretty bad. It's almost like, it's just, I don't know, like paintballs went all around it. The graffiti was not there. The graffiti was on the, um, I don't know, what would you call the electrical?
Utility box.
Utility box, thank you. And Counselor um, uh, Carmen said that her and her daughter are gonna be painting those to make it a little prettier, because that's where the graffiti was, so.
Wonderful. Anyone else? Okay, uh, Counselor Jordan?
Yeah, just, just to refresh people's memory, the extra money in the schools, this was relative. If you recall, counselors, we had approved about a hundred and fifty thousand for new boilers at McMahon. They were able to find other funding and grants, so now we're getting that hundred and fifty thousand back. And this is just one of the items. So when you see school capital outlay, these extras, that's where the money's coming from. So here we're getting uh, some, some much-needed paintwork, and then there's all these other different ones along the way uh, from that money.
Thank you. Counselor Ocasio?
I just wanted to know for the record, my name is um, Counselor Carmen Ocasio.
I couldn't, I didn't mean any disrespect.
No, I'm, I'm just, I'm not saying it because of that.
Okay.
Everybody's name be called out totally. I expect mine's to be called.
Okay, Carmen Ocasio.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Um, okay. Uh, anyone else? Alright, on the motion, the clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you are voting uh, to approve the transfer request. Devine?
Yes.
Grady?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
McGrath Smith?
Yes.
Murphy and Bledi?
Yes.
Ocasio?
Yes.
Israel Rivera? Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Eleven yeas unanimous vote. Okay, with that, you've passed that. Item twenty-nine is uh, counts, is Committee on Finance, um, a transfer request of five thousand six hundred fifty-two dollars and sixty cents from school capital outlay to R and M City Hall. Um, recommended that the order be adopted.
Motion to receive and adopt the committee report and pass the second reading.
Motion's been made to receive, adopt the committee report and pass the second reading. Counselor Devine?
Um, I'm not sure, we took both of them up at the same time last night, so we could probably do item thirty as well.
Suspend rules and take up thirty and twenty-nine as a package.
Sure, thank you. Um, motion to suspend the rules, take up twenty-nine and thirty as a package. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Um, thirty is also a transfer request uh, of twenty-nine thousand four hundred twenty-five dollars um, from school capital outlay and capital stabilization to R and M City Hall. Um, also recommended that the order be adopted.
Motion to receive and adopt the committee report.
Motion uh, to receive and adopt the committee report and pass the second reading. Um, Counselor Devine?
Yeah, we had um, Matt Peterson in, and um, the first one, item number twenty-nine, it's to replace a circuit breaker panel uh, that's in the sub-basement. Uh, apparently it was by a company called Federal Pacific, which is probably out of business. So all brand-new circuit breakers have to be put it in where they're needed. And then item number thirty, uh, repair and maintenance, they need new fire alarms system that has already been uh, put in. So that's just to uh, take care of that.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other comments? Counselor Sullivan?
Yeah, just a comment here. Uh, it's, it's great to see these things happening at City Hall. Uh, we really need to do a lot more over the coming years. Uh, I've said it numerous times here, it's the historic crown jewel of the city. But uh, anytime anybody uh, here in the chambers wants to get a hold of one of the janitors and take a walk upstairs behind the stage, uh, there's de-letting work that has to be done up in the attic. The uh, the uh, brick pointing is uh, crumbling on, on the interior. The granite you see on the outside is just facade. Take a look at the front steps of City Hall, it's a, a shame, they're, they're crumbling and that supports other structures up as well. Right out here, uh, you have uh, slate shingles that are coming off. Uh, the list goes on and on. So we really need to start paying a lot more attention to this building.
Thank you, Counselor. Anyone else? Okay, um, on the motion to pass the second reading, the clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting uh, to approve twenty-nine and thirty. Devine?
Yes.
Green, uh, Grady? Jordan?
Yes.
McGrath Smith?
Yes.
Murphy and Bledi?
Yes.
Ocasio?
Yes.
Israel Rivera? Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Eleven yeas unanimous vote. Okay, with that, you've passed it. Item thirty-one is a finance transfer request of six thousand three hundred thirty-five dollars um, from pay refuse H M E O to refuse overtime.
Motion to receive and adopt the committee report and pass the second reading.
Motion's been made and seconded to receive and adopt the committee report and pass the second reading. Counselor Devine?
Strictly overtime to picking up the trash.
Okay, anyone else? Alright, um, the clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you are voting to approve the transfer request. Devine?
Yes.
Grady?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
McGrath Smith?
Yes.
Murphy and Bledi?
Yes.
Ocasio?
Yes.
Israel Rivera? Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Eleven yeas unanimous vote. Okay, with that, you've approved thirty-one. Item thirty-two is a transfer request of three thousand sixty-six dollars and fifty-four cents from tree climber to forestry overtime, recommended that the order be adopted. Counselor Devine?
Motion to receive and adopt the committee report and pass the first rea- second reading.
Motion to receive and adopt the committee report um, and pass the second reading. Counselor Devine?
Yeah, the, this is for uh, forestry overtime. The um, the director of the DPW and one of the commissioners could not attend the meeting. So they gave us, gave me a printout, and it's basically um, forestry overtime.
Anyone else? Counselor McGrath Smith?
Thank you, Madam President. Just for the record, uh, we're still waiting for information that council requested. that council requested around the hundred most dangerous trees and the progress that we are making towards cutting them down. I would love to know what has been done for this, you know, very valuable overtime pay that we are fronting. What trees have been cut down? Thank you.
All right.
Madam President?
Yes, Counselor Jordan?
Yeah, just to double down what our colleague said, because she's a thousand percent correct. We left another item that they wanted forty-five thousand dollars for this purpose in committee, because they're supposed to be coming back, I want to say on the twenty-seventh, with this info. So hopefully, we get the list. Where's the money going? Where's the trees? What are we actually getting for our money? Is there any rhyme or reason to what tree we picked down? Or is it, you know, darts on a dartboard? I don't know. So we're gonna hopefully get answers to some of these questions, because as you correctly point out, and you and I are totally locked in on this issue for sure, is there's gotta be some sort of master plan here of how we're doing this. So we'll hopefully be getting those very important answers soon.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Bacon?
Thank you. And we're also looking for an update yet again on the use of the truck or the possibility of selling the little used truck that we spent two hundred and forty thousand dollars for. Thank you. Thank you, Counselor. Okay. Seeing no other comments.
On the motion, the clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you are voting to approve the transfer request.
Devine?
Yes.
Grainey?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
McGrath Smith?
Yes.
Murphy and Bledi?
Yes.
Ocasio?
Yes.
Israel Rivera? Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Unanimous vote, eleven yeas.
Okay, with that, you've passed it. Item thirty-three, yes, item thirty-three, is Committee on Finance, a transfer request of twenty thousand dollars from civil engineer to professional engineering services. Recommended that the order be adopted.
Motion to receive and adopt the committee report and pass the second reading.
Motion's been made and seconded to receive and adopt the committee report and pass the second reading. Counselor Devine?
I spoke with Victoria today, and she's going to be in on our finance meeting on the twenty-seventh for another matter, so she'll have that list ready for us.
Okay. Anyone else? Counselor Bacon?
Thank you. Just quickly, I would note that we got a report both from the engineer and the assistant engineer, Victoria Hool today. That was quite a good thorough report on a number of items that they've been working on.
Awesome.
Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? All righty. On the motion, the clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting to approve the transfer.
Devine?
Yes.
Grainey?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
McGrath Smith?
Yes.
Murphy and Bledi?
Yes.
Ocasio?
Yes.
Israel Rivera? Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Eleven yeas unanimous vote.
Okay, with that, you have passed thirty-three. Item thirty-four is the Committee on Finance, to whom was referred a communication from Steven Superba, an email regarding the police department cash seizures. Recommended that the order be received and referred to the police chief. Counselor Devine?
Okay, I reviewed, I reviewed the finance committee yesterday on the Hoyok media. We did not say, originally, I think it was Counselor Sullivan wanted to send it to the police chief, but it was Counselor Jordan who said, let's just send it to the city council and let them make the decision. So after reading this letter about cash seizures, it was actually written to Izzy. And I was a little concerned because, I want to give it leave to withdraw, I'll be quite honest with you. And I've already filed an order with the clerk to actually ask this new police chief about the cash seizures. I think Izzy had done it for five years. But this is all about a previous police chief. One thing that I was very, very concerned about was, in the middle of this letter, he talks about a lieutenant that has been dead for almost twenty-five years. And I think it's awful to bring that up. You'll, Kevin, if you've got the letter, you'll know who I'm talking about. And I think it's wrong. So that's why I wanted to give it leave to withdraw. I did refile the order so that we could talk about it. It was a good order, but this was in August of twenty-twenty-four is when he wrote this letter to Izzy. And he does talk about this lieutenant that passed away. And I just think it's wrong. So I would like to make a motion to give that leave to withdraw.
Okay.
Do that first.
The motion was made to give leave to withdraw to item thirty-four under discussion? All those in favor? Wait, no.
How about discussion?
I'm doing under discussion, sorry. Counselor Jordan?
Yeah, I'm with you on most of all the points that you made. We didn't unfortunately discuss this in committee. My only concern here is just from a matter of process. So Steve, who I happen to know, he's a constituent, he lives in Ward Three. He has definitely very strong opinions about how the Hoyok Police Department operates or do operate or whatever, yeah.
He's right.
But Steve, like any citizen of this wonderful community of ours, is entitled to his opinion on things. And if he wants to send a letter saying, you know, I think the sky is blue, red, whatever his opinion is on any topic, that's his opinion. That's not our opinion necessarily. So I'm just saying, like, for us to give leave to withdraw to a constituent who sent a letter, I don't really feel that comfortable with that, because it's like, okay, he wants to say this about HPD and his opinions on how things are done. I mean, great, that's, it's free speech. And just send it along to the Hoyok Police, and they will give it whatever level of weight they want to give to it. That would be my take on it. That doesn't mean we agree, we disagree. This is not us saying it, it's Steve Superba saying it. This is, he's making it clear, these are his opinions. And so just refer it right along over to the police and let them say whatever they want. Otherwise, it's like, we, what's the alternative? Joe Citizen comes in, I send a letter, and now I'm gonna say, well, I like what you say, so it's receive and send to whoever. But if I don't like what you say, it's leave to withdraw. So we gotta be real careful about that. And unfortunately, we're having this discussion now, because this portion of it didn't come up in committee. I was under the impression we were just gonna get it out of our jacket, because we're not gonna do anything with it, and send it along to the department and give it to Brian, he's the new guy, and he can do whatever he wants with it. And he can call Steve up, or I believe Steve's a retired police officer, if I recall correctly, not in Hoyok. But, you know, he has his opinions on how things should be and whatever. And I'm not gonna weigh in one way or the other on Steve's opinions. Thank you.
Thank you. I see Counselor Devine and then Counselor Grainey.
I think what bothers me the most about this is what he says about this lieutenant who has passed away, who is not here to defend himself. And that's wrong. I know this person's entitled to his opinion, but anybody who he disparages should be here to counteract that. And that's why I was gonna give it leave to withdraw. If you want, because I've already filed an order to do the exact same thing with this new police chief. If you want to send this, I'm gonna vote no to send it to a police chief. People can do whatever they want. But if you want this order, a new order, it's in the city clerk's office. She's sitting right there. If you want to sign onto it, just tell her. So anybody that wants to sign on, by all means. But I just, what he wrote about this lieutenant who is not here to defend himself, I think is wrong. So that's my take on it. Thank you.
I have Counselor Grainey, then Counselor Bacon, then Counselor Anderson Burgos?
Oh, boy.
Yes, just, I don't know if we have a right to, to send a leave to withdraw on a letter from the public. I don't know if it's within our right to do that as a council. I don't know if we need a legal opinion on that or not.
I don't think we need to get to that point, but we can definitely, that's an option that we could absolutely do if we need to.
Okay.
Okay. Counselor Bacon?
I just wanted to offer, I don't believe we have a motion in front of us. We didn't get a second, did we?
We did get a second.
We did?
Yes. So, and we can vote on it, and if...
I was just going to say, I'd like to offer an amended motion or a secondary motion, that we send it to the police chief to deal with as he wishes.
I'll second that.
Okay. And then, so motion's been made and seconded to amend the order to refer to the police chief and just leave it up to his discretion. So under, under discussion on that, I still have Counselor Anderson Burgos, if he...
Yeah, I just wanted to note that I'm, I'm not particularly in favor of, like, leaving to withdraw, in this case, a constituent from Ward Three's letter. What I do have an issue with, even though this lieutenant has passed away twenty-five years, he still has family. And so I'm thinking about his family, people who are alive. And so on that, based on that, I'm going to vote no on this. That's all.
Okay.
On the motion?
On the motion, and I think everyone made great points, so...
Is this the motion with the amendment?
Yeah, that's what's on the floor.
Yeah.
So the motion is to amend the motion and send, refer to the police chief and let him use his own discretion. If you vote yes, you're voting to do that. I guess I'm gonna probably do a roll call vote.
Yeah, roll call vote.
Because I think this is... Yeah. The clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting to the amended motion to refer to the police chief and let him do his own thing.
Devine?
No.
Grainey?
Yep.
Jordan?
Yes.
McGrath Smith?
Yes.
Murphy and Bledi?
Yes.
Ocasio?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera? No. Sullivan?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
No.
Bartley?
Yes.
Eight yeas, three nays. Okay. Madam President, I just want to remind everybody that there is that order in. They can tell Brenner right now if they'd like to sign onto it.
Can you circulate it around so we can read it?
It says the exact same thing.
Is it on tonight's agenda?
No, it's next time.
Oh, okay.
Okay, I haven't read it, but it sounds, it sounds what you said, it makes a lot of sense.
They can always add on the night of.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, okay, on to the next. All right. Item thirty-five is the Committee on Finance, to whom was referred an order that the city replaced the traffic light that was on Vernon and Main Street and no longer there due to the car accident. Recommended that the order be adopted and referred to the Law Department, Mayor, Alarm Division, and DPW.
And we took up item thirty-six as well.
Okay.
Motion to suspend the rules and take them up as a package?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to suspend the rules and take up thirty-six with thirty-five. And thirty-six, very similarly, is about the traffic light at the corner of Main and Vernon Streets. And it was also recommended that the order be adopted and referred to the Law Department, Mayor, Alarm Division, and DPW. Counselor Devine?
Yeah, it's basically trying to get this taken care of. And we added the Alarm Division, because they take care of a lot of the lights and that. So hopefully, by doing this and getting a vote of the city council, something will happen, because it hasn't been fixed in two years, probably.
Anyone else? Counselor Jordan?
Yeah, I would just say to the mayor and the DPW and all these other departments, and thank you to the chair for adding Alarm Division, pretty pleased with sugar on top. Can you, can you fix this light? Because it's the folks, this went in many years ago, and it's a travesty that in twenty-twenty-two, a drunk driver hit the light, light goes down, and we can't get the light back up. And so, you know, the, great question. I've asked, you know, we need to pursue people who do damage to city property and sue them if their insurance doesn't cover it. I don't, I don't care if they don't have two nickels to rub together. My, my point is, you know, we gotta send a message, even if we get a judgment and it's good for twenty years, and we don't collect ten cents on it, at least it sends the message. I don't know, maybe they'll win the lottery, who the hell knows? I don't know. But we, we cannot just allow that to not be okay. But as far as the residents go, they need to at least have the light that was up there back, okay? And that, we didn't just put a light there for no reason. And we're not gonna let, you know, we're not setting traffic policy based on whoever runs into what light. We're doing these things for a rhyme and a reason. And these citizens need to be able to get out of the Springdale neighborhood through Vernon Street. This is the way they get out safely. And it's just wild and crazy, and there's a huge runway down there without this light slowing the traffic down. So DPW, everybody else, please, mayor, you need money, come in and see us, we'll figure it out. Let's get this light back up. So appreciate the council adopting thirty-five and thirty-six. Thank you.
Thank you. I have Counselor Grainey and then Counselor Bacon.
Yeah, quickly, this is a major artery into the city. Trailer trucks, heavy, heavy traffic volume. It gives access, once again, as Counselor Jordan said, for the Springdale, for the Springdale residents to opt or come out of their neighborhood safety. It also is a crossing area to get into Springdale Park. The traffic light has been there since Heck was a pup a long time ago, and it should be replaced, and it should be replaced as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Bacon?
Thank you. And I would note, as the counselor, that it took six years to get a new traffic light installed in this city. It is not easy to get a traffic light approved. So if that light was approved, whoever got it done went through a lot to make it happen. And so I think, I don't believe there's a traffic light in the city that isn't needed, although I could maybe think of one that could be moved. But nonetheless, that would just be the point that I would make, that we really need to put it there for safety reasons. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. On the motion to refer thirty-five and thirty-six to the Law Department, Mayor, Alarm Division, and DPW, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thirty-seven is the Committee on Finance, communication from the city auditor. The Community Preservation Fund financial status, recommended that the order has been complied with. Counselor Devine?
Be received and adopted and pass the second reading. And I think we just received it, there's not much to discuss on it.
Is there anything you wanted to add?
Not really, just...
Okay. Anyone else? All right, that the order has been complied with. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you, Finance. Thirty-eight through...
Make a motion to take up thirty-eight through forty-three as a package? Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to take up items thirty-eight through forty-three as a package. They are all the Development and Government Relations Committee, and they are all being recommended that the orders be given leave to withdraw. All those in favor? Oh, wait, let me read them, sorry.
You're gonna give a report, right?
Yes. And Counselor Sullivan, are you good to, Counselor Givner's not here tonight. But I'll read them briefly into the record. Thirty-eight is that the council reconsider and rescind their vote of the May twenty-one agenda item, number twenty-five, regarding an act granting a local option for a real estate transfer fee to fund affordable housing. Thirty-nine is an order that the police department provide a list of and dollar amounts that have received, oh, with events and dollar amounts that have received police details and paid overtime during the last six months.[1769.60] Forty is that the mayor consider establishing a Hoyoke Urban Forest and Tree Committee. Forty-one was an invitation to our US Congressional and Senatorial Representatives to a DGR meeting. Forty-two was that the mayor develop a schedule of projects and programming that could be funded with marijuana stabilization funds. And forty-three is that the committee invite the Wayfinders team to provide an update on library comments. All were recommended to be given leave to withdraw. Counselor Sullivan?
Yep, thank you. The chair left me no notes from the meeting, so basically what we have here was just cleaning up the jacket. Some of these orders were quite old. Some of them had already been addressed either in, through other orders or other discussions. And it was also felt if there's any that anyone wanted to refile or take up at a future date, go ahead and start the process again. They were quite, either dealt with or, or just old.
Great. Anyone else? Okay. Thanks, Counselor Sullivan.
Well done.
Yes, exactly. Quick on your feet. These are all given order or leave to withdraw. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Motions, orders, and resolutions. Forty-four, filed by Counselor Anderson Burgos, that we revisit a discussion about city councilors having Hoyoke email addresses. Issues are coming up with some councilors having to delete emails because inboxes are full, potentially losing emails that are subject to records requests. Where would you like that sent?
Public service?
Public service?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Copy to the IT guy?
Oh, with a what?
Copy to, yeah.
The IT guy?
Yeah, copy to the IT guy.
With a copy to the IT person? I don't know, I just don't know.
IT guy.
Could be a woman, I don't know. Yeah, that, it's like the Wizard of Oz.
Hands out emails.
I think it's contract service.
There's a, there's a tech service desk.
Tech service desk, there we go.
The tech service desk.
All right.
See you next time.
That's a good point. Can we send it to the mayor as well?
Yep.
Yes.
To Novus.
Novus.
Thank you. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any, do you, I'm sorry, Counselor McGrath Smith?
I just wanted to name that there was a previous order I had put in on this topic, and I, I will be honest that I lost track of where it went. It started a conversation, and Kelly Curran had responded at one point with information and had been looking into it with some fees associated and
So you and I can connect.
So.
Cool.
Thank you.
Great. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Forty-five, filed by Counselor Anderson Burgos, that DPW install two blinking stop signs at the four-way stop at Parker Street and Beacon Ave intersection. Send to
Yeah, both Counselor Devine and Counselor McGrath Smith should be on this, right?
Add you to, okay?
Yes, please. Yes, thank you.
Yeah, there was a, there was a big accident
Huge, awful.
at that intersection, and the car actually crashed into the home.
And the home, the stairs actually moved.
Wow.
Yeah, 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 yeah. And there's been accidents there before, so.
And this is the street where one side is Ward Six and one side is Ward Seven.
Yeah, we share it.
We share.
What side's better? Trick question, trick question.
This is, this, I'm ready. I'll facilitate this conversation.
Little west side.
All right, so do you want to send that to DPW?
Yes.
Yes, please.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hello, Hoyoke's going to be popping tonight, huh, guys? All right. Forty-six, filed by Counselor Devine, that, filed by Counselor Devine, that the mayor is authorized to sign donation certificates for the following temporary easements on city-owned property.
Excuse me, Madam President, can we take up item forty-eight with that as well?
Sure.
Send them to Finance.
Motion to suspend the rules and take up forty-six and forty-eight together as a package. And forty-eight is also, let's see, that the, it's filed by Counselor Devine, that the city introduce a proposed order of taking. And so those will both, there will be a finance meeting for review and hearing. And these are both going to be sent to Finance. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Forty-seven? No, yes, forty-seven. Filed by Counselor Devine and Jenny Rivera. Order that the Commission on Disabilities be invited to Finance to discuss MGL Chapter Forty, Section Twenty-two G, which will officially set aside funds from handicap parking violation fines into an independent budget.
You receive incentive Finance?
Receive incentive Finance, just for those who may not have been here yesterday at the budget hearing, this is related to what was discussed at length last night, so.
Thank you.
Looking forward to that. Sent to Finance, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Down to forty-nine, filed by Counselor Devine. Order that the Historic Commission be invited to DGR on June second to determine whether any demolition to be done in the future in the city council chambers are not against historical norms. Send to DGR?
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Fifty was filed by Counselor Givner, in service of the public, and to clarify procedure, order that ordinance, Section Seventy-eight, Fifty-seven. Just order that.
Looks like that goes ordinance.
Yeah, we're going to send this to ordinance with a copy to Public Safety and DPW?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay. And just the note says to make sure we invite Victoria Hool. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Fifty-one was filed by Counselor Jordan.
We already took care of that.
Oh, yeah, we did.
That's awesome.
Just kidding. Fifty-two, filed by Councillors Jordan and Bacon, ordered that the city council adopt the attached substitute municipal modernization ordinance.
Refer to Charter and Rules?
Second.
Or joint
Or both.
Yeah. Do you want to do that, just in case? Motion to
Whatever you think is best.
Send it jointly to Charter and Rules and Ordinance?
Motion to send, how do we, how do, I don't
Some committee has to be the one that
With a copy to
Is the original.
Why don't we do a copy?
We've, the last time we did this, we sent it to both places.
I know, but it's
Because a copy can't be acted on.
Oh, that's, and that's how, okay, so
But you also can't have two originals.
Okay, but that's how, okay, all I'm saying is that's how we did it.
I know.
Not even just the other times that we've done it, a joint committee. Madam Clerk, do you have anything to add? Okay. Well, we'll send it, we'll send, let's send with a copy to Charter and Rules.
Okay.
Unless, well No, we're just doing it the same exact way we did this before. Yeah. So a motion to send to both jointly Charter and Rules and the Ordinance Committee. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Check what it I don't want this to be the thing that hangs us up.
I don't think it's supposed to be a duplicate, though, I really don't.
Okay.
Ordinance can't change an ordinance. It can't, it's not
So then send it to ordinance with a copy to Charter and Rules. I think that would be good.
I'm okay with that, if
Brenner, you okay with that? Okay.
Okay, okay, we'll do that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Fifty-three, filed by Counselor Jordan, ordered that the city council adopt this attached special act to remove future fire chiefs from civil service for the purpose of preserving longstanding residency requirement for our fire chief as embodied in our ordinances.
I'd like to receive and refer to Charter and Rules. And I'd like to make one amendment to my, if I may.
Yeah.
I also, I should have added, but I did not, I forgot to add this other sentence at the end. I'd like to put, it also will allow the department, the Fire Department, to select external candidates, and it will also make the selection process comparable to police chief. Okay, so that is, there's another, as we're thinking about municipal modernization, this will create this to be very similar to the police chief process. So I would like to make a friendly amendment to add that sentence I just added.
Second.
Sure, yep. It will also allow the Fire Department to select external candidates and make the selection process comparable to police chief. I'd like to add that sentence at the end.
Sure, so
Question?
Yes, Counselor Devine?
Is that civil service?
Correct.
Okay, because of it.
Currently, it's civil service.
Okay, but if it stays civil service, you can go from the outside, just by civil service? Because as a fire commissioner, we've done that.
Sounds like something to discuss.
Yeah, we'll go, we'll go over it in committee. There's a lot of nuance to it.
Totally.
So, so my sentence has been added?
Yep.
And I seconded it.
Thank you.
Okay. And so
All in favor of the amendment made?
Yes, so motions are made and seconded to send with the amended language
Charter and Rules.
to Charter and Rules. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Fifty-five?
We did fifty-four already. And then fifty-five was a late file that communication from Counselor Jordan, or well, wasn't from
Originally from constituent Christina Schilling of Hoyoke.
And
We have also a Ward Six resident.
Great, and you want to refer that to the joint committee?
Joint committee, I also would like to send it a copy to the mayor, superintendent, and police chief.
Great.
Because she's concerned about, in this, a former statement, apparently a policy from October first, and she's wondering, how much is it really being enforced? So
Perfect.
We could send it to those, to joint committee, and then mayor, superintendent, and police.
Send to the joint committee, mayor, and superintendent, and police. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Is that it? Second.
Motion to adjourn, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?